Thank you for joining us this morning. Becky, are you ready? Good morning. I will call the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting for Monday, August 25th, 2025 to order. A couple of announcements. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners reserves the right to enter closed session at any time as necessary to discuss the agenda item currently before the board. We also reserve the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of the parties involved. At 9:15, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization following the Open Meeting Act with amendments which is posted at the entrance to the room. The Board of Commissioners will also follow the Open Meeting Act. Our first order of business is to open with prayer. If you would all join me, please. Dear Lord, as we gather here today, let us remember our blessings for the privilege of living in Lincoln County, Nebraska. We ask that you come alongside all of our first responders. We witness the daily sacrifice. We ask that you keep them close and return them safely to their families and loved ones each evening. We also ask that you send protections for our military serving at home and abroad. Please let us remember those who are less fortunate than we are, those who struggle, those with illnesses and all hardships. Let our communities surround them with support and help them make it through their difficulties. We are thankful for the wonderful rain that we have had this year. We hope that those who have suffered storm damage are able to recover. Lord, you are our hope. Do not let us grow weary. Give us the strength and courage to make good judgments based on your truth and in right or wrong only. We say these things in your name. Amen. Our first agenda item is to approve the minutes from last week's meeting held on August 18th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on August 18th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion by Hughley and a second by Weems. Any discussions or corrections?
The last sentence contradicts the first sentence. Joe Hughley present, but then he was absent.
So Joe joined the meeting a little late, so at the beginning he would have been absent.
But then that's why Havy arrived and then he had to stay.
I think in the third or fourth down.
Sounds good.
Very good.
I think what she was saying is only half there during the meeting, so that probably balances out, right? Are we supposed to agree or what?
Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
abstain.
Woodruff.
Aye.
That was best to end that discussion.
Moving on.
Yeah.
Be beaten right up.
We will now consider the claims and treasures receipts.
Make a motion to approve the claims and treasure receipts as presented and as always, if we do find something that is an error, to make that correction at that time. Second.
We have a motion by Hughley, a second by Woodruff. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Our next item is adoption of Resolution Number 2025-16 granting the conditional use permit to AHA3 Properties LLC for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a private recreation camp that will include three small cabins and one larger lodge.
What you have before you is the resolution I prepared granting the conditional use permit and directing Judy to issue it pursuant to the written findings therein. The one special condition requested that it not be for commercial purposes is in there.
Very good. Thank you.
It'd be my motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-D16 granting the conditional use permit to AHA3 Properties LLC for conditional use permit to allow construction of a private recreational camp that will include three small cabins and a larger lodge. The property is located approximately four miles west of the Silver Lander Reservoir in a TA-1 Transitional Agricultural District and described as lots four, five, six, and accretions in part of the north half, south half of Section 8 Township 13N, range 34W at 6:00 PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I will just add that this is for all of us to sign. Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Moving on, we will receive an order filed, the final report of distress warrants on personal property and real estate from the county treasurer. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? This is an annual action that we take for all of the distress warrants on personal property and real estate for mobile homes, cabins, trailers, manufactured homes, or similar property assessed and taxed as improvements to leased land. It goes on to say it is the decision of the county board per Nebraska revised statute 77-1738 to strike any taxes according to the list provided by the county treasurer. This, too, is a report that I believe we all sign.
Be my motion to receive an order filed, the final report of distress warrants on personal property and real estate from the county treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Weems and a second by Commissioner Brunz. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have authorize the chair to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by Consolidated Companies Incorporated.
Good morning. Jason Schultz, County Highway Superintendent.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jason.
So the first permit is an installation of a new fiber line going up Pond Road north of Highway 30.
Looks to be 1,410 feet of new fiber cable.
Yep. It's up to a new residence up in the area.
Be my motion that we authorize the chair to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by Consolidated Companies Incorporated.
Second.
Just to add, there is a check attached for $142.30. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Our next item is authorize the chair to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by Charter Communications LLC.
This one is for a new bore of fiber going into a residence out south of the lake crossing South Loney Drive.
Be my motion to authorize the chair to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by Charter Communications LLC.
Second.
We do have a check attached to the application for $301.50. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we have a special designated liquor permit submitted by Pals Brewing Company for the Homestead Poncom Patch on the following dates, September 20th, September 27th, October 3rd, October 10th, and November 8th of 2025. It appears that we do not have anyone in the room representing Pals or the Poncom Patch.
They've been doing this one for several years. As you guys remember, Pals has actually been annexed into the city, so their liquor license is actually through the city now. But where this is, the Poncom Patch is still out in the county. They needed to go through this process for the Poncom Patch.
Very good. I would seek a motion.
This is a recommendation or approval? Approval. Be my motion to approve the special designated liquor permit submitted by Pals Brewing Company for the Homestead Poncom Patch on the following dates, September 20th, September 27th, October 3rd, October 4th, and November 8th of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
And authorize the signature of the chair.
Very good. We also have a check attached in the amount of $200. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Aye.
That's the last of the row.
Very good. Thank you. It is 9:17. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization following the Open Meeting Act with amendments that is posted at the entrance to this room. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board Equalization meeting held on August 18th, 2025.
Chair, it'd be my motion to approve those minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on August 18th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or corrections? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Abstain.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Angie's doing double duty today, apparently. Our next item is certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor.
None today.
Angie Forbes from the county assessor's office indicates that we have none today. Now she's gonna run back to the computer that she's been Manning Forbes for our YouTube channel. Thank you, Angie. It is 9:19. We will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Our next agenda item is at 9:30. Our next agenda item is at 9:30.
Becky, I think we have all the payroll.
You do.
Thanks. Glad to report on the inland port building last week when we got the alarms for no power out there, that the system was in fact working via battery backup the way it was supposed to. We, but since the power was off, the alarm company still called us. It was a planned power outage. And although the battery backup kicked off, it did show that the main power was off, so things were working the way that they're supposed to.
That's good to know.
Let me just go keep going, Joe. Let me just keep going. Oh, okay. I'll wait. I'll just wait till you're done. Becky, so I asked Nicole this morning, went down and asked her about a centralized voting record. You gotta pay her, you know, a source. I was trying to find that in family names, name of widow or person. Is there a way I can check that up in county records? Probably not.
I mean.
Are they?
She showed me the voter books from back in the forties, but that just shows how many people voted in each district.
Good. Well, that'll be.
School census records.
School census? Yeah. Which will please him and.
Those are up on the fourth floor now. What did we raise our cremation? We'd have some more going back later.
Okay.
School census stuff. That might be your best bet.
Uh, I think.
Did it go up that high?
Yeah, we were doing.
Fourth floor.
I think we were doing a thousand.
I thought it was like five hundred or seven.
Yeah, I mean, stored in the archive of stored boxes.
Oh.
But they're up there. I mean, they're.
School super case.
We finally got them like in archival boxes, about four or four. They were down in my office, but ran a group, so. Archive the lock, so they can go upstairs and somebody.
We raised cremation.
Right. We just tried to determine where they might have lived up there in that township.
Yeah, because we actually started trying to.
1808.
If they're large people, it costs more.
Right. There's no itemization on it. It just says cremation 1800.
Obviously, raise that too.
You don't know, don't.
It says okay to approve to pay.
Seems like a lot of them are.
They're all 1800.
But I don't want.
I mean, they.
I mean, if they don't, if they can't pay, they can't pay.
Do you two, Jessica did. I'm assuming he doesn't. Probably put the whole thing in. Probably did. Off the top of my head, I love.
Becky, you beginning at University of Nebraska.
It was something that.
I was gonna say.
It's not how I count, it's not my account.
I was actually thinking it wasn't.
It was Tanya or not. Courtney. It was some Courtney.
Remember still way under up low and.
Okay. It was.
Because it's like this. Yeah, it's not me. I was over and over. I'm like, this is not my account.
Talking to Mike.
That's a lot of people.
And he was.
Then it won't pay the interest. I'm like, I'm not paying interest.
It must, it must have been 1800.
Because that's a net loss to them. Unfortunately, their families. Out of state could afford it, but they won't. Because I looked some of them up, six, seven years ago, and they had the assets, but they, they pretended they didn't.
Yeah, I think that happens to them quickly.
I don't think we have a recourse. Not worth pursuing. Been a while since I've seen her. I know, that's why I chuckled.
Good, 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 keep going.
Must've been getting close to about 98 over.
Just glad somebody pays attention to it. It is 9:30. The item before us is discuss and consider the request of the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office and the Lincoln County Road Department for approval of roadway markings for aircraft speed enforcement.
Morning again.
Morning.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Dan Newton, Lincoln County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Captain Newton.
Yes, ma'am.
We just say no. She gotta run. Let's just quit.
I paid my debt. I paid my debt.
You did that.
All right. Which one of you gentlemen would like to begin first?
Well, I guess I can start it off. So I was approached here a while back about, from Officer Lever from the North Platte Police Department, about possibly putting road markings on county roads to help with speed enforcement from the air with a cooperative program that they're doing with NSP, Lincoln County, and NPPD. So I told him I wasn't opposed to it. The Roads Department didn't have a problem with it, per the, as long as the Commissioners were okay with it. But most of that I thought needed to be in the Sheriff's Department's court, so reached out to Dan and Jerome and got the ball rolling there, so that's why we're here.
Each department has at least one officer that's assigned as a tactical flight officer. They train with NSP's air wing. They go up in the plane, run the cameras, and run stopwatch. These marks are the white paint hash marks on the edge of the US highways that you see. They go out and measure specific distance, then they sit in the air and stopwatch cars, point A to point B. Very simple formula. It's better, better than a radar ticket because that's accurate. And then they call the units on the ground, describe the car to them, and they go stop them and write them tickets. They do it on the interstate quite a bit. They're interested in branching out into some of the county roads. West Walker Road between North Platte and Hershey Speedway. They want to do some on East State Farm Road. We would have to decide where. Yes, sir.
Can we just say no right now then?
Yeah.
You're doing great right up the left. Yeah.
So is this just the markings on the road, or is this actual signage on?
It's just the white paint mark on the edge of the road, and that's where county roads would have man-hours and paint costs to go out and actually mark them. Well, does that mean that we can't grade that road and bring more gravel on it, Jason? It would only be an asphalt road. Oh, oh, I see.
Um, we do have some county roads, gravel county roads, that could use some enforcement on them too, so.
You know, that's something we probably need to check the State Patrol. If they could see a sign, we could put a sign on the county roads, even if it wasn't nothing more than a reflective sign so they could see it from the air ground. That's a possibility.
I was kidding. Please, I didn't want, I shouldn't have brought that up. I don't think they could go out and measure two trees. As long as those trees didn't move, because it's time, distance, equals speed.
And, and you're right, it's very accurate.
It is.
So if your, if your speedometer's not working, the mile marker posts on any highway serve the same purpose.
I have a question. So is this something that the new command with the State Patrol is trying to branch out to get a little bit more use, joint use with the airplane, or otherwise what? I'm not sure who's driving the boat if we have a city police officer coming and talking about county roads.
This program was started under the last Colonel. So it's, it's, the new Colonel, I'm sure, we haven't heard that he's doing away with the program, but it's been in place for, I would say, a couple of years. Okay. And our tactical flight officers, the plane's stationed in North Platte now, so they could get called to go help and end up in Keith County or wherever the incident is at, they're in the plane to, to run the camera for the pilot or to run stopwatch on speed enforcement.
Okay.
Very good.
So a few questions. So our, our officer, our deputy, is up in the aircraft. They're running the clock, right? They're radioing down to our deputy on the ground, who's actually pulling them over, saying, hey, bear in the air, gotcha.
Right.
Here's your ticket. How does that speeding ticket revenue get distributed? Because State Patrol's still gonna have cost. Is that us, or does that go to the state? What's that split look like?
I would say it's whatever agency wrote the actual citation. The officer in the air would be listed as a secondary officer. The primary is someone making physical contact.
So if this goes to court because somebody challenges, is it our deputy that was actually running the clock?
It would be both of them.
Both of them? So we're relying on the pilot, which is NSP, to show up at court at the same time?
It would not be the pilot. It would be the tactical flight officer.
So it's not both in the air? It's our deputy in the air and the person that actually wrote the.
Or it could be the police officer that's in the air and they're running aircraft on East State Farm Road. That's they could be running aircraft in a different county, so, but I understand your question.
I'm just trying to.
Very big question, but the primary officer is first one up on the speeding ticket. He verifies, this is a vehicle they gave me, blue Mustang. Second one to you. That officer has testified all that. The secondary officer would have to testify as to, this was the time of day, this was his distance that we used, this was the time equals his speed.
I think what's missing, Captain, is to go back two years and explain how we got into this program, where we have a guy in the air with a trooper. Well, if they know that far, we have a guy or the city has a guy or.
NSP does. They have people here.
And we have a mutual agreement.
Passenger in the plane, and they're certified. They have all the gear. They have the headsets. Everything they need to be a passenger in the plane, but we're not the only ones that do that. Is Damon Park's number one tier or is it just?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I know North Platte, LC SO, and NSP here, I think they even have a Carney officer. If they take out from North Platte, land at Carney, pick up their officer and.
That was the beginning of this marriage, and they see all of that.
Where's the State Patrol receiving their compensation? Is that your question?
That's, yeah, that's, I mean, ultimately.
They just, it's a part of the service to the. They have two, two pilots. That's, this is all they do. They're never in full uniform in a marked patrol car. They're at the airport. And this, this is what they're assigned to do. It just, it gets very busy up there, so someone come up with the idea of having a second officer, deputy trooper, up there to run the equipment and just let the pilot fly.
So in all seriousness, all joking aside, I have a little issue with the whole concept because if public safety is our number one concern versus a revenue source. Exactly. You put a, if you've got a problematic stretch of road where we've got school kids driving to school, and see, I was that age one time and I drove a little excessively fast pretty much on a regular basis. So I'd rather see ground emphasis where there's a presence known and you actually get young people and old to slow down because you don't want them to roll vehicle and get hurt.
Right.
Versus putting a bear in the air to, you know, oops, I got clipped. Well, the deterrence to me is, oh, there's been, there've been a deputy out here every year, every morning when I go to school. Or, you know, the heavy traffic time rush hour, our version of rush hour, mornings and evenings getting home. Versus putting resources in the air to, to, to target, for lack of a better word, citizens. And I understand we shouldn't any of us be speeding, but I just, I know that there are certain stretches of road that I know that if I drive a certain time of the day, 83 is one of them. I can almost guarantee you I'm gonna meet a trooper between North Platte and my turnoff. I'm, I anticipate that.
He lives up there.
But still, it, that clicks in your mind. You say, okay, you look and check your speed a little bit, maybe, that kind of thing, so.
I couldn't tell you the last time we participated.
I don't know that this is a big thing, but.
I would say better than 95% of the time, it is gonna be that.
Yeah. I would, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
You're good.
Okay. I would, I would think that if we were to go along this line and approve this, it would be my wish that we have actual signage saying air enforcement in a particular stretch.
I'm trying to think on the, because they have these markings on Highway 30, on I-80 and Highway 83 now.
But those are state.
But those are state, those are state.
And I've seen other places where it says speed enforced by aircraft, usually with the fighter gun.
Yeah.
Back in the, in the background of that picture, but.
I know from experience, for the Nebraska State Patrol, this is not a new program because in the nineteen eighties, my parents got a ticket in between, yes, in between Valentine and Bedford, I believe. And so it, it's not new technology. I definitely hear Commissioner Weems' concerns, although I know traveling the state, when I was driving back and forth to Broken Bow, I knew exactly when there was a, a change of state patrolman. And so I would meet a state patrolman on the same stretch of highway at the same time every day. And I think having unpredictable enforcement is probably more effective than me being able to set my clock by enforcement happening. So I feel like for public safety that having this would definitely raise my awareness anyway, as long as you don't mark Hershey Dickens Road, because that's the one I speed on the most.
Well, the signage is a good point, and that would also be
I mean, if you're giving a fair warning.
Department. If they get caught then, I mean, what are you gonna, what you got to say?
You're saying this section of road is patrolled by air, is that what you mean, signage? That probably helps on the deterrence side, but if you have someone in the air, you transmit information down to somebody on the ground, it's somewhere in vicinity, right?
Right.
Well, if the aircraft was out there working, that's
Yeah.
there would be two or three cars out there that they would communicate.
Yeah.
Yes. So there is a presence, both in the air and on the ground, working together.
One without the other.
Yeah.
I mean, you-
I mean, typically, these are used as speed traps when they do the air enforcement.
Well, they complain about State Farm Road between eighty-three and Buffalo is a speed trap because the speed limit's forty-five. And, I mean, even on East State Farm Road, our guys write some huge tickets out there before you get to the DC center.
Because it's thirty-five.
Well, it's thirty-five, and then it graduates to forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah.
But they write people well in excess of that. So that stretch is a problem. We've killed people on that stretch. I mean, it's, and that, that also, part of it's in the city, goes into the county for a short stretch, goes back into the city, which is why the city officer Lever came to us and said, let's, we could work this jointly, but it's such a short section of road, I don't, I'm not sure how they would do that.
And they're not asking for any financial compensation.
Just
Just partnership with manpower and marking the county road.
Correct.
What would be the cost? Any idea?
It's gonna be pretty small. I mean, you're probably looking at a few hundred dollars each one of these markings you put down. So you set a couple in one area, even if you added signage, I would say you'd probably be less than a thousand dollars per section you do, so.
Of course, more you do, the cheaper it would be.
I'm representing the driver, okay? And you have been sworn, correct? How, how did you mark those? What, what measurement did you use? Did you use GPS? Did you use a tape measure? How was that done? And how was it verified? Mr. Schultz?
We, we would paint them where they are located by NSP.
NSP would actually go out and mark them.
So are you saying that you can guarantee me that NSP is qualified to mark those? They have the, their marking credentials?
I think NSP has in dot engineering goal, mark them. And whether they use GPS or tape measure, well, whatever. But I don't even think the troopers-
So that arrow doesn't come back around like this, it stays going that way to NSP?
That was my question.
The scope of this, how many roads are you talking about?
Right now, Walker Road, State Farm Road.
You're just identifying one that you would do, not County White was all over blacked up or?
No, Walker Road and State Farm, East State Farm.
If we approve it, I mean, more could be added in the future. Would that ever come back before the board?
I'm not sure. Those are heavily traveled roads in the mornings and evenings. I mean, you could get out on Hershey Dickens, but you're not getting the traffic volume. Highway twenty-five, twenty-three, eighty-three, thirty, they're already marked. So these are the only two county roads that I'm aware of.
How about?
Even on North River, if you're speeding on that, you're
Yeah, that's a suicide.
You're not very smart.
Exactly.
I've hit deer out there. But it happens. I've stopped people out there for speeding, and I live out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now, these are the two that were identified by the tactical flight officers that they would use.
I know for me personally, I get a lot of citizen concerns for the people that live and walk along those areas about how fast cars drive. So I would think most of the people in the area would support it.
The time I would see it probably most likely to be used, I don't think, probably it's getting coordinated between pilot and us very often because of the lack of, I don't think they'll coordinate an airplane. What I see is being real beneficial for us in some of the areas where we have high-performance motorcycles, and we can't even catch them with a car, they cannot run that airplane. So in those instances, we probably would put one on North River Road.
Well, then you're looking at all school road too.
I can think of front, front street in West Front in District One. I can think of-
We've had motorcycle accidents up, up north.
Yeah.
And Sunday afternoon, it's a free-for-all, because I can hear them.
The performance bikes are where I see the most benefit for this. Do we, they have a pattern, but we can't do much with them.
Okay.
Two last summer, and it, it had an, had an impact, but this will have a big impact if it's coordinated a few weekends. I don't, I don't see it happening with motor vehicles at times.
So, I mean, county roads, I mean, NSP has jurisdiction across the entire state. They could use these, having a, a trooper out on our county roads. Okay. I'm just trying to think of all aspects of this.
Unintended consequences?
Yeah.
Well, Chair, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the request of Lincoln County Sheriff's Office and Lincoln County Road Department for approval of roadway markings for aircraft speed enforcement. Hold on a second, a discussion.
We have a motion in a second. We've had good discussion. Is there any further discussion?
I would say that if we were to do this, I would want to see a, a plain road sign that clearly articulates that it's an air enforcement zone, air speed enforcement zone.
Speed check by radar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I'd like to vote for that one.
Yeah.
That would be accurate, but not from the plane.
Yeah.
I would, I want, I want the public to specifically know that there's a risk that they could get-
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I mispoke, misstated it. Speed check by aircraft, not radar.
By aircraft.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want them to know.
I just want them to slow down.
Yes.
That's all I want.
I think you're gonna get greater deterrence with that sign at the same time.
Because most people may not see that stripe.
That's your point.
I see that, I see that sign when I'm out of the local area, and I, it does, I make note of that.
Which thing?
Coming into, say, Columbus, Nebraska, somewhere, and it says, speed check by radar, and you dropped sixty-five to forty-five. And I'm cognizant of it, so I'm gonna think other cars.
Yeah.
I can pay attention to that.
If adding the signs to the agreement helps move along, I feel like for safety, that it's, it's a great idea. I'll probably be one of your better customers for a while.
You don't want to be a customer, right?
One of your paying patrons. I have a heavy foot. But I would support the signage. I mean, it's gonna add some cost upfront, but once they're in place, I do think giving people a fair chance to know that it's enforcement.
Possibly.
Yep. And it, and it may be a good deterrent also. So. We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodrow.
Hi.
You please.
Hi.
Uh, Weems.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Woodrow.
Hi. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Our next item is discuss and consider adoption of Resolution Number 2025-17 by Lincoln County determining the final allocation of levy for political subdivisions under the county levy limit.
This is an annual resolution. These are the, the hospital districts, the egg society, the cemeteries, and the fires fall under the fifty cent levy limit for the county. We got the valuations from the counties. We need to get the valuations from the assessor, and they just, uh, put in their initial requests in time. So this is determining for each tax district what the, the levy limit can be.
So just for the record, this sets, says what the levy limit can be for Ag, the Ag Society of Lincoln County, the Sutherland Hospital District, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven cemetery districts. Seven fire districts.
Becky, why isn't Stapleton in there? Since they have levy in Northern County and Port County.
We are not the headquarters county. Logan County is.
Oh, okay.
These are only ones that we are the headquarters county.
So you don't set that?
No.
Okay.
Logan County will do that.
I got you. I couldn't remember why that was important.
Good question.
That would be why Gothenburg's not in there either.
Correct.
Yes.
It would be my motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-17 by Lincoln County that determines the final allocation of political subdivisions under the county levy limit as stated in the resolution.
We have a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? Uh, I will add this is for all of us to sign. Roll call, please.
Please.
Aye.
You please.
Aye.
Woodrow.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Hi. Our next item is Lincoln County Employee Recognition. We have four employees today being recognized for their years of service. Quentin Smith with five years, Jason Trosper, five years, Randy Terry, ten years, and Larry Meyer, twenty years. Sheriff, would you like to do some honors?
Larry, I'm gonna hear both, grace of God.
I was gonna say, all of our phones together are getting gray or- That first one. Thank you.
Could, could we invite you guys to stand in front of the table there facing that direction and get a picture with all the Commissioners in the background? Because I'm, I'm sure Larry wants one with us in it for his wall.
Absolutely.
We can come.
Yeah, we can stand.
This is usually Tammy's job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie and Quentin. Our, our Road Department employees, Randy Terry and Jason Trosper are out on routes doing what the county appreciates. So Jason, I'm gonna let you take their certificates and their coins. Please let them know that we appreciate them.
I will. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
It's interesting. My phone came on. That name was up there. I had to say, very different, Randy Terry Russell Terry.
Your phone must like, think my voice sounds like this?
No, it's, um, gone by a weed sprayer from down the east, the one that somebody wouldn't go through, sort and pick up for me.
I need to, like, start putting a notice on where I'm traveling to. I could probably make some money hauling stuff back.
What?
Eighty-three should be your last one.
Is that what you did?
What's that?
That's that one from my office. There is somebody at the house. You'd have to come and check it.
Parents, parents green. It is ten AM. The item before us is discuss and consider approval. of the twenty twenty-five Lincoln County inventory for all departments. I knew that wasn't gonna be a skinny file.
All the departments got their inventories in on time. Um, several people in my office went through and like we have things where if they dispose of them or trade them or put them in storage or whatever, they have the transfer sheet. So they went through and checked those and checked them to their new inventories and I think everything is all good. We're training, we have, Cheryl had done them and we're also training Michelle in my office to do them. So probably a couple people.
Are there signatures that are needed on each department's form?
Correct. Yes.
Unfortunately, they're.
These are, these are annual thing. They have to be done each year, uh, about two months after the close of the fiscal year. So they have to be done by about end of August. So today's the day.
Thank you.
But yes, you all have to sign. But they were kind and put the page to sign on the top of each file.
Very good. Thank you. It'll take us some, more than a minute to go through all these. So bear with us. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I would move to approve the twenty twenty-five Lincoln County inventory for all departments as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Weems?
Aye.
You please.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wood.
Aye.
I remember back in the day, we actually even used to look at these. And it did take some time.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, it's not an easy job.
Pardon me?
Match it up to serial numbers, asset tags.
The nice thing about it is you have consistent people in each office that are used to doing this. So it's when you have that transition of employees where it gets difficult.
Well, you know, the thing that's interesting, talks about all these being transferred to building and grounds. And does Booker at his auction get rid of it? Does he put it, stories over here?
Goes to storage first because I used to rob stuff out of there on our N O E district.
Stage one goes to the auction.
I had to transfer it in. I've got a huge map to put on the wall. I got it over there. And then they threw it away. Yeah. It's not there anymore. Total shame. Becky, are these in any particular order, ethically or anything?
They were just by department number, but it, it's okay.
Okay.
We can get them back in order.
By the number of transfer sheets that are attached, it looks like their departments are pretty good about transferring stuff that they no longer need.
Yeah, they're pretty good about it. And then we've, we've started trying to get everybody, when you buy something, put an inventory number and put that inventory number on your claim or the stuff attached to your claim. So we know to fly that. We have a tickle, tickler flyer that we put in stuff all year. So we go through that too. It's like, did they remember to add this? So I think we've got everybody at least on Excel now, make an Excel spreadsheet. If we, if we don't, we're gonna get them all on there.
That would certainly make it a little easier for keeping track.
Yes, we can just, absolutely easier. We don't really have an inventory program per se. We've got a software program.
Think that would be a module in NIPS.
That might be a good, a good suggestion.
Maybe our, of our officers can bring that forward.
Oh, do you see them? NIPS people?
Becky's like, no.
If it would work, it would be great.
Yeah. I mean, with all of the little barcodes that they can scanning with cell phones that they can do nowadays, you would think that there's something on there for inventory.
The thing that, um, you know, you, you know, there's so many that say no longer in a condition to be used. I don't know. Maybe not by you, maybe by somebody else.
I do see emails go out where one department will snap a picture and a description and send it to either Becky or Tammy and say, you know, we've updated. Is there anybody that can use this equipment?
Yeah. Sometimes it's like pitcher cartridges, things like that. Yeah, we do do that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna kick you now, Joe.
I haven't even got started.
Are there really fat ones from road department in the sheriff's office? Probably.
You're both here. You can address any questions to them.
Okay, you wanna sign that one? You wanna sign that one?
No, I didn't sign that one.
No, I said, do you want to?
No.
You don't wanna sign it? Okay.
All these things make me nervous.
Joe, this is an F Y I, um, Booker's team is out reading the port of the headquarters building today.
Also, county weed department was out there weeks or a month ago and sprayed to help reduce the need for weed whacking.
I think, I don't know about that, but next step would be to declare surplus and then and then, cause I, I actually got stuff from Phelps County one time. Spraying equipment and it was on their surplus list. And, uh, I went down and retrieved it. Their, cause it'd been declared surplus in their county.
Went to your county, went and got stuff from the college and the co- they, they, they bit the, you know, out of the whole, the whole courthouse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Always.
College.
I went down to the state's boneyard in the old prison in Lincoln years and years ago. Came home with a stainless steel thousand gallon tank.
It's amazing what you can find.
Yeah.
It really is.
They had, I mean, that was something that would've cost at the time five thousand dollar. And we were gonna set it up for a roadside spraying rig. We never could uh, sequester it, a two-ton truck, set up the rig. But that was the idea was when Hawk was over at the road department, we were gonna set that up for roadside only. One person could just get in it, tank makes it run the whole day.
A deal.
And, uh, the last time I was down there, it was still in the, it's still over in the yard. You could probably get, I don't know, four, five hundred dollars for a surplus sale, I guess, cause it's stainless. Good tank. Oh, yeah. There was, there was a, there was a lot of good equipment down there. And a lot of it came out of the military airport. Old airbase out there at Mount Lincoln. They had all kinds of things. Uh, crane trucks and work lifts.
He used to get like email stuff from him quite frequently. I haven't seen one in a long time.
He said they, he used to, it was a clearing house. I could call or send it to, he gave you stuff to a little post up in South Dakota. He says, oh, that was taken.
Yeah. Probably get a little of that now, but.
Yeah.
Maybe through NACO they should set up a
Yeah.
Uh,
Good point.
Swamp meat, or, you know, or
You can.
Surplus hotline.
Ken had a pointed idea, you know, like our sirens and light bars that they were doing.
Something that was appropriate to county uses.
Could set up maybe a swamp thing where you could say, okay, three light bars. Well, somebody down the street says, Ken, I don't have any.
Within the
That's a good idea.
Within the weed controls, state association, we used to have a place in the newsletter. Or if a county had something that they didn't need anymore, they put it on there. Let the other counties know, hey, we've got this, this tank, this set of, this boom, set of booms that we don't use anymore cause we went to boomers, on and on and on, a pump. And made other counties aware that it was surplus to them.
Jason, doesn't the road department already kind of implement something like that? Where you guys are letting other road departments know if you have something that you're gonna phase out or get rid of?
We don't really have anything. There's a couple of the other counties that we're in touch with quite often.
Right.
Give heads up on some things, but, um,
Nothing formal that you use?
Some of the deputies have been looking for something, but.
For the most part, it's just going to auction though, correct? That way we can get the most.
Yeah, I think we did sell, we sold the bee plow to, uh, front here.
I think so, yeah.
We have surplus ones, things like that. People read chapters about, we'll have anything that's
Formal.
Well, that's surplus.
Well, in-house, the sheriff's offices signed over arrow sticks.
Split the half.
It's split the half.
But I wish there was some clearing house that everybody could go look at and get some use out of it.
That's a good idea. I'll add it to the list of things to inquire about. So Becky, what's the process or maybe Joe or Kent can answer this on, like on this one, it says, transfer to another officer department, no longer have a need for it, no longer have a use of.
They just, they introduce it into their inventory and they're responsible the next calendar year or fiscal year to report it. Should, there should be a transitional file.
But usually that other department, ninety-nine percent of times Booker.
So he'll go pick it up and take it somewhere.
Cause it usually goes to Usually goes to building and grounds and then they find it from Booker.
Okay.
When Jack, uh,
Guyer.
Guyer was doing that. That's where it always ended up. Jack, if, if something was available, Jack knew about it. Cause they, they called Jack and said, we don't want this in our office. So Jack's guys came and got it. And then he'd say, well, I know, I happen to know extension needs a file cabinet. That's typically was an informal process.
We maybe should go check out that wherever Booker's putting stuff into storage and see what's all in there.
I've been in there a couple times. Surprisingly, there's actually not a whole lot in there.
Where, where's it at?
In, um, Boiler, look, we declared surplus not too many years ago. So most of that's probably
Yeah.
If nobody wanted it anymore, they probably got it rid of it. Sold it. Storage room. Took it to Isabel's or house. The bigger items went to right across to Booker's parking spot.
I don't know that I've ever been in there. There is some stuff up on fourth floor that should be dealt with.
Are we still holding state records up in the fourth floor? I thought there was some stuff at District Court up there. That's a Milwaukee, uh, cordless tool. If it says in fuel, that's what they call their cordless
Sixteen volt.
Like three to twelve.
I was gonna say fuel.
No, that's how they identify their cordless battery powered power tools, twelve and eighteen volt.
It's the new, it's the new terminology for this. They have those where they don't get hot, right?
Normally like
And you can't run them out.
I don't know.
I'm not sure about that, but that's their cordless, cordless car. I don't know specifically. Jerry and I had a conversation about it, but I remember what the conversation entailed. Okay. Yeah, I'll ask Jerry after the meeting. He might remember. That particular department there, all that. Creditor pass. We got all that.
Oh, yes.
We got all that from Jerry.
Do you know if Jerry ever got all the
We retrieved all that.
Traps and stuff from Jerry.
Can't task barrier on that one.
I do believe we got the traps back for certain. And all we got is a round back. We should back kind of back.
Okay. He did bring a bunch of stuff back in. Yeah.
Chris, do you have a map on that next time?
Justin, do you have a map with you?
Okay.
I think Tammy had gotten one from you, didn't she, Justin?
Yes.
Yes.
Becky, some of the forms look really different than other ones. Each department just has its own form that they use? Or maybe it's just printing different? Printing different.
Supposed to be a uniform form.
That's a bit digital. It's all about format. Who is, who is that one? We're trying to get them all on ourselves.
Uh, this is, uh, child support enforcement. There's been a couple, though I haven't kept track. Dive team is on a totally different form.
They're on a totally different frequency.
Is it a map that would print also? He probably goes his own.
Probably, probably.
Yeah, so I don't think it can be pertinent for the conversation. Yes.
Because we're not, I don't know what they're putting there, we're just talking about the area being included for that.
Yes, sir.
Nothing. I was just practicing saying the chairman's name, it's all.
No, the Ford tractor. We thought we transferred it to Luis after, after Booker got the, the skips. You just don't realize how much equipment it takes to run some of these offices until you see it all compiled like this. It was falling. It was gonna get away. Now I'm never gonna get it back on. I'll squish it and you put that on. Thank you. That should be it.
Jason, I thought you had the biggest one. It's kind of between you and Jerome.
Very good. We are done signing the inventory. Our next item is discuss expansion of the Nebraska International Port of the Plains District boundaries to include the North Platte Municipal Airport. Commissioner Brennan, would you like to take this conversation?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, so I asked for this to be put on our agenda after some discussion with Commissioner Hughley. This has been kind of an ongoing thing. I think we, everybody kind of envisioned this possibly happening in the future when we established the inland port a handful of years ago. And we worked, there was a group of individuals, Gary, myself. At the time, it was Commissioner Williams. Some of the members from the inland port with our, our state senator and other senators. I'm thankful to Senator Jacobson and the work that he did on this in amending the Municipal Inland Port Authority Act to allow for part of districts, inland port districts, non-contiguous areas to be expanded up to fifteen miles away. And that was done very specifically with Lincoln County in mind, so that we had the potential to incorporate part of our, our airport, a huge logistical asset for our community into the nexus of transportation assets that incorporate the inland port district, so. We got all that framework and, and the potential for that to be established. And then the inland port really kind of spurred the conversa, or the Airport Authority really spurred the conversation moving forward with their request to see part of their ground incorporated into the inland port district. What everybody has before them are letters of support from the North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation. And then two resolutions. The second resolution actually incorporates two political subdivisions, both the North Platte Airport Authority Board of Directors and the City of North Platte together into one resolution. And then the second resolution comes from the Nebraska International Port of the Plains Board of Directors formally requesting for the board to expand the port district to incorporate part of the airport into the overall port district, so. These resolutions and a letter support from the Chamber Development Corporation, once passed, went to Becky. And now they're before our board to discuss. I don't think we're at a point nearly where we can consider and actually make a vote to actually do so, because there's some things that need to happen prior to us actually taking steps to, to make this formal and then submit it up to the Department of Economic Development. I think some of the, from my perspective, and Tyler may have to weigh in on this, but we have certain requirements that we're gonna need to do on our end as far as truly establishing a meets and bounds description of the area. It's my understanding that there's roughly, and Justin, you may want to come up to answer some questions that may arise. Roughly eighty-four acres of the airport property that they have identified could be incorporated into the air, or the inland port district. Only a certain percentage of that is actually buildable now. The rest of it would need some dirt infill. From my perspective, there's also, I mean, we're, we're getting a political subdivisions, another political subdivision into the mix in this relationship, and I would want to see a framework for what that relationship would actually look like. Obviously, they, they wouldn't sign any of that framework until we actually expand the district, granting them the authority to do so. But I would want to see what that scope of the relationship, who would be responsible for what? Who actually maintains ownership of the ground? Any potential buildings that would exist? Who has responsibility over infrastructure? So I would want to see the framework of what that agreement would look like between the Airport Authority and the Inland Port Authority Board of Directors. That would be a request that I would see before we would ever accrue this as well, but wanted to bring this forward. Joe, Joe and I wanted to bring this forward for discussion and kind of get the, the temperature of the board on whether or not we have the appetite to export, expand the district currently, so.
And, and I think also when you had mentioned the Airport Authority, or maybe you, you already said it and I missed it, you know, the city being a part of that conversation as well.
So just for clarification, remind us of all the different political subdivisions that would be involved in, in the project.
Yeah, so obviously the county, we've established the, the port district. Ultimately, the county has authority as passed under the Municipal Inland Port Authority Act to expand that district or decrease that district in size at any point, so long as it doesn't go below four hundred acres. Currently, the district is at four hundred acres. Up to twenty-five percent of that could be non-contiguous up to the fifteen miles away, so we, we have the potential to expand up to a hundred acres in non-contiguous area. So we're one of the political subdivisions that's involved. Kind of a quasi-political subdivision is the actual inland port itself, whose members are appointed by this board. They have certain authority as established underneath of the Municipal Inland Port Authority Act. A potential expansion to incorporate the airport would thus bring in both the City of North Platte because it falls in their jurisdictional bounds, but with the resolution that they have provided, they're, they're saying, yes, county, go ahead and, and do so. But I know that the mayor and members of the city council have those questions as far as what does an agreement look like? And then the last political subdivision that would be incorporated would be North Platte Airport Authority, so. A lot of players, it's really encouraging from my perspective to see so many different entities really come together and want to see this, this move forward and everybody really be on the same page as far as the opportunity that exists and, and capitalizing on it and really seizing this moment that we have before us for economic growth for our community. But those would be the political subdivisions involved. And then you have the state as well. Nebraska Department of Economic Development is, is obviously thoroughly involved in everything going on with the inland ports and the state legislature that provided the authority through, through state statute, so.
Very good, thank you. I'm just going to say, I think from the very beginning, the, the development of the Port of the Plains and the Hershey Rail Park, it's all about transportation, right? So when you talk about transportation, that's air, ground, water, secondary highways, primary highways, interstate rail, so I think it would just make sense to expand and incorporate the airport so we have that air part of the picture to, to grow and develop our inland port and the rail park.
Joe, did I miss anything in my
No, I think you did great, Mr. Thank you.
The airport was integral to the entire discussion from day one, so it's not like it's a new evolutionary thing. It was always part of the big piece, a big piece of the puzzle as far as, number one, getting consideration for the ports. Secondly, making the, the port a viable business operation. So the airport was always there from day one. It was also recognized that industry between the Hershey Park and the airport is also down the road potentially a, a partner because there's over six thousand, roughly a little over five thousand feet in one sighting here in town that is in the hands of the industry. The, we identified that perhaps down the road because of commodities and agriculture being our number one generator of business, they may become a partner. So it was recognized that they could also be brought in, and that's, you're talking less than twelve acres, fourteen acres of real estate. So that would also be a potential partner in that expansion. But the airport was integral to the discussion from the, from the very get-go.
Justin, thanks, thanks for being here this morning. Can you talk and give some insight to my colleagues? And we've had some conversations, and I know Joe's been impressed with those conversations as well and part of them. But what does the potential look like out there at the airport?
Justin, before you do that, will you sign in and announce your name for the record?
Yes.
You're in the hot seat right now, just so you know.
No problem.
Been here before, haven't you?
Probably been there a lot lately.
It is budget season.
Yes, um, well, thank you for having me. I'm Justin Gosnell, Airport Manager. Really, I mean, the big thing is the potential for air cargo, potentially being out there to go off the distribution and expand with the port and the city and county. There, I know there's a lot of like, well, what ifs and how's this gonna work? I think the big thing is just having a plan in place so when something comes, we're not starting like we are today. I think we all can agree on that. As far as, you know, who owns this or who builds or whatever happens, a lot of us can just depend on who comes in, you know, and, and what the situation is. We do have considerable amount of acres. We would, you know, everything along our taxiway Bravo, we, we would want to make sure that it stayed aeronautical just by the location of it. There is some ground behind it, you know, if, if somehow it worked with the port and everything else or distribution wise that, you know, we could consider, but most But most generally, we would really want to stay aeronautical just because you would not want to use that space then potentially not have it for a very viable candidate that comes in.
So by aeronautical, you're talking like an air cargo warehouse or something like that? Not a manufacturing plant coming in to the airport property per se?
Exactly, exactly. So then, you know, air cargo, I mean, obviously, Mr. Brunson could, you know, expand more, but it's really taken off. It's probably one of the fastest-growing industries of transportation, especially in the aeronautical world. So to have something established for one of these businesses is ready to come in, then, you know, we're ready as a group. And there is a lot of subdivisions and there's a lot of terminology. I know that, and getting it all figured out is the key right now so we can, you know, get the step moving forward.
Bringing air cargo onto airport property isn't something new. So there's a lot of good models out there to follow. It's been done over and over and over again, as you know, Chris, in the line of work you do, so. But I feel like this just makes good sense. I do like, Chris, that you gave us a list of many things that need to happen before an actual agreement is reached, because those are all important questions that need answered or at least an idea in place.
Yeah, I think we absolutely need that framework. We need to make sure that, you know, should we pull and execute on this request, that we have a lot of those questions answered prior to doing so. So that's going to be my request, that we see that happen.
Very good.
You know, I think hopefully what would come out of this meeting is just a consensus of where we're going, that we continue to work with legal counsel, with the various players, and get this framework and get a roadmap, one, two, three, two A, two B, four, five, six, laid out so that we can come up with the next phase, I would think.
And how long is that going to take, you suspect?
I don't know.
I think the biggest portion is probably going to rely on both the Airport Authority and the Inland Port Authority, their legal counsel, getting together and kind of fine-tuning what an agreement would look like. And again, not expecting anything to be signed, but at least a pretty solid framework to be put together. And I think that we need to engage with the county surveyor and our legal counsel to get the meets and bounds put together. That's going to require some coordination with the Airport Authority on what ground they're actually looking at, because currently, I know that there's multiple parcels that make up the airport grounds. I don't know if it makes sense for them to go through that replat process and get everything joined or what that parcel would look like to simplify it. That's a process in and of itself. But obviously, county surveyor is going to have to coordinate with them and get the specific ground out at the airport identified before it would come back to us as well, because I don't think that the airport has the desire to incorporate the entire airport ground out there, just a portion of it.
The ground out at the airport is owned by the Airport Authority, is that correct?
Yeah.
And would, if there was a parcel that did involve structures, would that still be owned by the Airport Authority?
That's part of what we need to get figured out.
Well, and that, a lot of times, is going to be what type of business and how big of a business. A really big business, obviously, would probably do a land lease. Historically, we own every building out there except for two, and one of them's on a land, like a twenty-year land lease, and that's what's common. To actual give the ground up or be able to sell the land, that's, even if we wanted to, we really couldn't because it was purchased by the federal government. So then they would not be willing to probably do that. They would want us to somehow have some type of ownership. So then it comes to what size of building? Do we build it ourselves and then lease it out? Or is it someone that wants to come in, put their own building in and put a land lease in that they can keep renewing? There's a couple of different options, but a lot of it depends on what type of business wants to come in.
At the end of the day, essentially, all you have to solve is complying with the statute that created the inland port. The language says, we lease, we occupy, we otherwise have an interlocal, whatever. The attorneys will figure that out. In essence, all you got to do is read the statute that created it and however they identify that that's part of your non-contiguous operation. If you define that language, I don't see that as a big old challenge, because the Airport Authority is not going to relinquish a hundred percent of their control. And inland port is simply going to operate just like they would with any other interlocal. They're going to function within.
And I think it'd be considerable what the inland port's going to do. They probably aren't going to give up their land to a business either. It's going to be a very similar business model. And really, but, you know, I wouldn't want to get so concentrated on something that we eliminate a business wanting to come in, because you know the right business can change the landscape of what we may or may not think we're going to do.
Amen.
My big concern is I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as infrastructure maintenance and things along that line, who's responsible for what, so.
I did have an opportunity by chance was at the city council meeting the night that it came before them, and I think it's important to point out that the city council had unanimous support for expanding in the city, did annex that property two years ago, a year ago?
Seems like that, yeah.
And also, there's a resolution in here from the Nebraska International Port of the Plains, also supporting the expansion. So just wanted that to be part of the conversation.
To your point, all, the Airport Authority's board was unanimous, the city council was unanimous, the Port of the Plains Board was unanimous, and the Board of Directors for the North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation, they provided unanimous support.
Oh, good to know.
So. Speaks volumes on everybody wanting to see this happen.
Okay, so where do we go from here? This was a discussion only.
I think Joe and I will have a conversation later today with our county update to the Port of the Plains Board of Directors. On, I think, well, I suppose, question I would have is, is that kind of an agreement something that everybody would prefer seeing?
I support it, yes.
In that way, from day one, as I said, this is not new.
Exactly, so we'll pass that word on to them. I think you'll probably take it back to your board and allow that conversation to start happening. I think Tyler's heard loud and clear what we're wanting to see, so. Our committee will engage with the relevant stakeholders and come back to the board at a later time when it's appropriate to bring this back before everybody.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming and the information, Justin. Okay, our next item, Susan Moline, CPA, to present and discuss the 2025-2026 preliminary budget for Lincoln County. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning, again.
We're probably going to see quite a bit of you in the next few weeks. If you would like to just announce yourself for the record?
My name is Susan Moline, and I work for Mick Chesney-Martin-Satorne, and I work with the county on preparing the budget. So I don't think anything's changed since last, the last meeting. It's pretty much the same preliminary budget that we had then. The first page of this is the actual, it's the mock-up of the budget hearing notice and the final tax levy notices. So both of those are, they kind of summarize everything.
Where are you at, Susan?
Just page one of, I think it's this page right now. At this point preliminarily, the total request for the county is $20,109,495.
Oh, hang on one second.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams and I are grabbing our stuff.
Okay, if you don't mind.
That's okay.
Stowed over. Okay, the total request for this year, preliminary request, is $20,109,495, which is an increase of about 2.9 million over last year's tax request. Actually, three point, actually more like 3.4, sorry, I got that wrong. But 3.481 million over last year's request.
Not 2.9, 3.4.
The new property tax request authority is in place this year, which is considered the property tax cap, and that right now is being exceeded by 1.8 million. So that's the amount that needs to be addressed in order to be in compliance with the new authority request.
1.8?
Seven nine one, actually.
Yeah, 1.791, right.
Page two, bottom line.
Got it. Right now, the main request, okay, so the general fund, actually, the general fund was the one that increased 3.5 million dollars, and then the jail bond fund decreased 600,000, because we're nearing the end of the jail fund. So the primary increase is obviously to the general fund, which helps fund the road fund and a couple of other smaller funds. The total budgeted expenditures for this year increased by about 1.1 million over last year's budgeted expenditures. And like I said, the 900,000 is a decrease. Last year, we had 1.5 million for the jail bond fund, but as that reaches its, the last four years of payments, that will decrease slowly until that final payment is made. So down at the bottom, it shows the various changes. And the operating budget went up 2.4%. The property tax request.
At the very bottom of the front.
The property tax request went up 16.72%. The valuation went up 6.4%, and the tax rate at this point went up 9.71%. If you were to get down to what the authority is, which I think is one, let's see. The tax request authority was 18,00317. If you were to get down to that level, the levy would be 27.6%. So it would increase a very small amount, or it would decrease, I think, a little kind of bit, but pretty much what it was last year. The second page is actually the new tax request authority computation form that's provided by the state. The very top is the prior year tax request. And there are several items, lines two through 10, that are not used this year because those refer to the prior year authority request, which doesn't exist. So this is zero for the first year. And that would be, next year, that would be adding anything that you use in exception this year, if you decide to use any exceptions. The second half of that under the actual allowed increase starts out with the actual taxes levied last year, which is different from the actual tax requested, this is by statute. You add to that your growth percentage, which is provided by the assessor. In this year, it's 1.15%. And the inflation percentage, which is determined by the state, 5.17%. So that brings the total requested authority, the authority that you have, to 8.317, 821. And so that is over your actual budgeted, tax request is over that by about 1.8 million. Any questions on that?
So if exceptions were taken this year, they go back in next year?
And then you kind of create this, subtract it next year, add it next year. You kind of, it has a domino effect over the future years, most likely.
But you could take an exception from another area that year, correct?
Yeah.
Susan and I have done some kind of research, I guess, this last week. I've contacted NACO, she's contacted the State Audit Office. A lot of this stuff is included in the pack, and I just handed out to you. That 3.4 million increase, now does that, I mean, we have, I budgeted 750,000 for that loss of Manitas. So that is accrued in the increase, although we'd have revenue to offset that.
So, say that again.
That lost Mananitas, it was in the grant fund, which is part of the general fund.
Uh-huh.
That's 750,000. So that is part of this increase, although, correct?
So.
There's revenue that would have to come in for that to go out, so.
Right.
I guess I'm trying to figure out where the 16% increase came.
That was going to be my question.
Because I don't see that in the budgets themselves.
Because historically, the increase, the property tax request increase hasn't been nearly 16%. So can you help me understand that better, Susan?
Well, part of the problem is, remember, we went in a million sundown. We didn't start out, we didn't have our cash reserves, so we already started out on a whole over a million bucks. That's part of it.
Yes, the cash, our cash balances.
Our cash I have is way down.
Way down, yeah.
Oh, like five million is down. And that was a 23, 24 audit, we were down five million. Is that not correct, Sheri? Or is it what the auditor told? There's a thing in here from the auditor that shows you that. From our auditor, not the state auditor.
So just for me and my understanding.
Can we ask Sheri to come up, maybe so I don't have to keep?
Yes, Sheri, please come up and announce yourself and sign in.
Sorry, Sheri.
Thank you.
Your brother loves it.
So contributing to the 16% increase is cash reserves.
Yes.
From, say that, explain that to me, Sheri, if you want to sign in and announce yourself.
Sheri Newt, Lincoln County Treasurer.
Just for clarification, I want to get something straight if I can, but I want to make sure I understand. So I know as a lieutenant, you outrank him, but even as a captain, I think you still outrank him. Aren't you the head of your department?
I am.
I just want to make sure I understood that whole dynamic. Thank you, Sheri.
Understood, Captain?
Yes, sir.
You just better not speak.
Watch out for airplanes.
Now, at home, he outranks me, let me tell you.
Now that we have the hierarchy established.
And I don't have those paperworks with me, but the cash reserves, I believe, were the five million that Becky did mention.
Okay.
Sheri has sent all emails out of information.
Correct. Lots of great information in there. I've already been to Sheri's office and had good conversation. Sorry, I will be back for more conversation.
That's okay, you're welcome anytime.
But I would invite everybody, take a look at that email that she sent us and stop in.
And the email showed all the cash that we have in the county, the cash I have to invest, and where it's allocated to within every single fund in the county. So just because we have like 23 million total doesn't mean we can spend it because it's allocated to other funds, not just the general.
Correct. And some of it's tied up.
It is tied up, yes. It is tied up, yes.
So we can't get to it right now because of previous, um, elected officials' investment.
But.
Yes.
I didn't mean to, but, but to have that conversation, and I'll have it separately, I can't today. But I think that's a discussion that we need to have. I think that we can get to, and there might be some penalties, but.
There is penalties, last time I looked, the first national, the biggest one.
But. But, but, but if push comes to shove, I'm, I'm willing to look at those penalties because we're in a different situation than we were when those investments were made. So, I think we ought to all consider possibly getting to them in conversation for a later time, but.
And thank you for that, Commissioner Hugley, um, I had asked Sherri to look into that months ago.
Yes, and I am in constant contact with Jason when they are invested, and he's, he's keeping an eye on the markets as they fluctuate.
Months and months ago. And, and there were some very substantial penalties, I felt at the time.
Thank you.
For that one, yes.
And I believe you shared all that information in that email, just, you know, so everybody can be aware of it.
Did that go out last week?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I can, I can print one.
That's okay, that's my fault, I just need to get in.
No.
This is a rundown of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, there is a package in there from Jill Clay, who's our auditor, that also addresses the cash.
Print it out in our packet. Okay. Thank you, guys, for putting it in writing and printing it out for me, because I like to spread it all out and look at it together, but, okay. So, sorry for the interruption, Susan, I just wanted to get that clarified.
That's okay, that's fine.
So, continue.
Okay, so we were, I guess we're on page two, I'm still on the authority, on that authority. So, basically at this point, without reducing the tax request or using exceptions, uh, you're over that authority by one point eight million.
So what are the options, either trim that one point eight million out of the proposed budget, or you increase the levy, correct?
Or you're using. Or, or add some, add an exception. Which generally has been, the, the general consensus is that you would only use those exceptions for a large one-time increase that's necessary for a specific purpose.
And any exception we take this year starts us off minus that next year.
That, mm-hmm.
Unless you take a different exception next year.
Well, you can still, you could still subtract the exception you used, let's say it's public security.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you would, you would subtract that out to start with, but you can then re-exception it this year. So you can exception the new one in the second year if you, but you would be, that would be a cycle you would start. And you would have to do that every year in order to meet the, the requirements.
So it's just basically moving it, just shuffling it down, yeah.
Yeah.
A shuffle, yeah.
Down the road, and all of the, you know, a lot of it's gonna depend on what the growth percentage is, what the inflation percentage is.
Okay.
Because as those fluctuate, that's gonna have an effect on the overall amount too. So you may find yourself having to use more one year. And, you know, you don't wanna get into a position where you run out of exceptions and you can no longer increase your budget, you're just.
Yeah.
Locked, we're locked in.
Yeah, so.
In your packets, there's some notes from my conversation with Candace that kind of is a brief recap of that. Now, bonds are a different, they're an exception, but they're different.
The, yeah, if you have, let's say, an exception would be if you issued a new bond and you had to increase your levy to make the payments on that bond. So you'd use an exception to get that levy up, because that's, you'd have to do that other, otherwise you'd be cutting too much. Then it would be, if you use the approved bond exception, next year would again be subtracted out. But it would also be subtracted out of line thirteen, which is the base for calculating the increases. Having said that, you don't have to use the bond exception if you get bonds. If you issue new bonds, you can use a different exception, you can use any exception that you're eligible for. Which then would allow you to maximize the increase for the following year.
Okay, so, Ken, let me give you a hypothetical, Susan, so, it's low hanging fruit, it's a number I can remember, so let's. So, the road department has a roughly nine hundred thousand dollar line item for motor grader replacements. That we had a long discussion last year about whether we wanted to go that way or not, with new units. So let's say for the sake of argument, we said, Jason, you're gonna have to bite the bullet, and we're gonna come up with, of our one point eight, nine hundred thousand from that line item. And we struck, struck a line through it. Then we decided, okay, well, we're gonna bond purchases of some motor graders at the same amount.
Mm-hmm.
So if you, if you went out in the bond market and you got funds to buy capital, or I mean, uh, rolling stock, the next budget cycle, what happens? Where does, how does that, from an accounting standpoint, and from the cap regulations rules that we're now complying with, where does that take us?
So you would, you would issue a new bond, and you would have a payment schedule that would tell how much you, uh, need to pay. And we typically front-load the bond funds to get as much money in there in the beginning. So whatever was determined needs to be the tax request for that bond fund. That you would, in theory, increase your levy by, because you are gonna need that extra money to pay those bonds off.
Mm-hmm.
So, then in the next year, you would subtract it out, and you would add the new amount, whatever that new amount is, that you would.
But that would come off of your budget, uh, your budget authority, that nine hundred thousand, the next year?
Um, it would come off of, yeah, it would come off your tax request, it would.
So, so you're gonna penalize yourself that way as well, as far as?
Yeah. And.
I, I'm not saying it's a great idea, I'm just trying to, this is all brand new stuff.
Yeah. Yes, you, if you use that approved bond exception, if you put it on that line sixteen.
Right.
Then it also will reduce line thirteen, you know, that, that base for next year. If you were to use public ser- safety services instead, which you can do, you don't have to use the approved bond exception if you don't want to. You can use any other exception that you're eligible for. Instead, which then, like I said, would not reduce that base for the calculation next year.
So if we do, uh, road overlays, which we typically do, year to year to year, and we have two million dollars in those, and we bond those, is the same, same process apply to that?
Mm-hmm.
You, you minus your exception before you add your slice on your growth, so you're starting with a lower.
If you use the bond, if you use the bond one.
You're starting out with a lower.
So it's gonna penalize us for bonding any.
Yes.
Yes.
Or you can, you can't add your growth and then, then take that away, you have to take that away first.
Take it away first, so you started a lower number to begin with.
And then add your growth and your slice. Yes.
And, and I think the reason for that is that your bond, once you've issued a bond, those payments don't increase or decrease based on inflation or growth. They're not gonna, they're not gonna change. So I think that is probably part of the reasoning for not including that in the growth part of it. Because you're not going to need an extra five point one seven percent in the bond fund to pay those bonds. You're gonna need whatever it is.
For the life of the bond.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But, like I said, you don't have to use that exception. You can use a different one.
So, safety is outside the exceptions.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, public safety, so that would be jail, sheriff.
So if we are gonna bond anything, we should look at bonding or taking those as opposed to road projects?
No, you can use that, it doesn't matter.
Is that what I'm hearing? Doesn't matter.
Basically, you have a laundry list of exceptions you can take for any reason, as long as you're, you are authorized to do it. So you could bond anything, but you can use the public safety services.
Does road stuff, or excuse me, go ahead.
It was, it was tied to the, the public safety question, so, do we have an exhaustive list of all of those services? Does it include the courts?
It includes, public, yeah.
Susan, I came up with a figure.
Public safety services would include pretty much sheriff and jail. And then, only those expenses that are budgeted for to be spent, you know, to be funded by property taxes. So you have to take out certain income items that specifically relate to those departments.
Okay.
Um, county attorney, same thing, uh, public defenders. Let's see. Support relating to an imminent and significant threat to public safety, which, I'm not even sure what that is, but that's probably something that's not gonna be included in your list. In response to a declared emergency in a prior year.
So I go.
And, that would be a one-time exception that you would increase your lid to, or increase your levy to fund that kind of repair.
So all the guardian ad litem and those types of expenses that the county has, they're included in that?
If you ha- if it's included in the county attorney.
Yeah.
What we look at is the county attorney budget, the, um, public defender budget.
Okay.
Those are actually miscellaneous general, but they're across.
Yeah, they're all in miscellaneous general.
Okay, that's, that's, that was my question.
And then you can also use a prior year unused property tax request authority, which I believe for you, this year is sixty-five thousand, which was something the state gave us from prior year lid exclusion, or the lid calculation.
Is that on your worksheet anywhere?
No, it's not on there either.
Say that amount again, so.
About sixty-five thousand, as I recall.
But if we use it, we gotta exclude it next year.
We got it right.
Yeah, and the same thing, you have to add that, you have to subtract that back out next year.
So whatever we do this year affects next year.
Right.
Which we're not used to.
Yeah.
No.
And then, whatever you do next year affects the year after that.
Year after that, so it is a.
It takes us away from budgeting on a one-year basis and really coming up with like a three to a seven-year outlook.
Three, yes, NACO's suggesting three, five, and seven-year looks.
Okay.
And then a lot of it depends on.
Which, which is interesting, cause now we have to be clairvoyant on what's gonna happen in the future.
Exactly. Yeah, what is the inflation gonna be? And the growth is typically, there's a wide range of growth numbers.
Gotta love the state.
So are they, did they provide us with any guidance on forecasting? Is there an, uh, an office at the state level that we can pick up the phone and call and say, hey, help us see three years into the future?
I don't know, I haven't.
Um, no, I mean, in my conversations with Candace, we did kind of talk about forecasting revenue will be an important part of this process.
Yes.
She said, don't underestimate your revenues, be realistic, but don't underestimate them either.
Right.
As part of this process.
Kind of flies in the face of being fiscally conservative.
Yep. So is the best place for us to start is by paging through the budget requests that we have and seeing what can be trimmed to take that one point eight million down to a much lower number?
Yeah.
Best place to start? Okay. Susan, is there anything else you feel you wanna run out to us?
Point, the, the second item is, yeah, the other item is page three, which is your allowable growth percentage. This is the joint public hearing calculation. At this point, you're over that by about two point three three eight million. So that just drives whether you have to participate in the joint public hearing. And there's no adjustments to that one, that's just, it is or it isn't, whatever you come up with.
Susan, remind me, and maybe, maybe you don't know, but all these changes to the budget, they affect counties and municipalities, correct?
Yes.
Villages.
Not schools or.
Not schools or fire departments or.
Cemeteries.
Cemeteries, just cities, villages, and counties.
How about the egg society, where do they fall out in there?
They would, they're not included.
Not included.
Yeah. They still have to deal with the old lid issues.
I find that interesting.
Mm-hmm.
That is interesting.
Some local conversation for another time.
Yes.
Okay. Becky, is there anything else you wanna communicate with us? I know you spent a lot of time on the phone with Candace last week, and she's always a great source of information.
I kinda just did some short, little synopsis notes for you, like I said, a lot of it's just understanding, but the best thing to do is what. Like, uh, where our cash is. I mean, we really, I, I mean, in my opinion, Susan and I have talked about it, we need to create a sinking fund, like, right away, first thing this, this budget year. Uh, where that money's gonna come from.
Well, that's the question, we're.
It's probably inheritance would be the only option we have at this point.
Yeah.
Be a good place to start.
But. But we, we've got to get some cash back in the reserve.
Um, I've participated in one, I think you and Becky have been in on the other Zoom calls about cash reserves. Lots of good information, um, I probably had more questions than answers at the end. But at least we have people who are willing to give us models, um, in a good place to start. But I agree, we, we have to have, um, cash reserves to, to keep healthy.
Yes.
So that does, I feel, I agree, that that needs to be one of the very first things we determine.
We'd have to establish a sinking fund by resolution, so.
Okay.
Maybe we should have that on the agenda for discussion, considering.
Soon as Tyler drafts one. I got some hints for you at least.
Yeah.
I don't see that that's a lot of value, and you've got, you've got an inheritance fund that can serve as that. And secondly, if you're, if that five hundred thousand year mark every year is gonna go against your, your budget ask for the next year, you're penalizing yourself one way or the other, aren't you?
Not for cash reserves, it does not work that way. Um, it doesn't count against anything for the next year. I mean, you can, you can call that fund lots of different names, we, we could leave it labeled inheritance funds. But I think us, I think maybe that, um, projects a different meaning to a lot of people. I think setting it aside as cash reserves or sinking fund is, and, and it doesn't need to be the entire fund. But I, I've, I've talked to a lot of other counties that are taking that route also, based on conversations with, um, the cash reserve model meetings that we've participated in.
Off, off the top of your head, do you remember how much we're already transferring out of that for?
Out of.
Where, uh, inheritance to, to general and roads and.
Road of inheritance.
Yeah.
That are already built into that.
Typically, it's almost two million.
I wanted to say it was two million.
And. Yeah, and I, I also told Susan, we need to, um, increase our, our cash reserve for our self-funded insurance.
Yeah.
Has dipped down way, like sixty thousand, that's the one our cash reserve line item should be, let alone expenses for this year. So that we have got to build up as well.
Yeah, I think we have, right now, we have a total transfer of one point seven eight.
Say it again.
Million, the total transfer from inheritance is one point seven eight million. So it'd be seven hundred eighty to roads and, uh, the consensus at general.
That's what I think we had up to last year.
Although, we may not need to, last year we transferred from inheritance to general, from general to roads for lid purposes, so that that could be considered restricted funds that are funding those.
Yeah, but that goes out the window, cause you don't have the lid for that.
That goes out the window, so, we could just transfer directly to roads and it would be the same difference, so, yeah.
And we don't have.
So there's one, one good thing coming out of the new, the new rule.
Yeah, we could just have one transfer from inheritance to roads and it'd be cleaner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Susan, say that one point, how much million?
One point seven eight.
Is what you've already got factored in to the budget.
Mm-hmm. Right. Right.
So, that drops our inheritance from like five point seven down to three point seven, almost, three point nine. So that drops our inheritance from like five point seven down to three point seven, almost three point nine.
Did the state auditor's office have any additional tips, tricks, ideas to share?
Um, I don't know, not really, all I really asked him was what exceptions can we use, and they basically said any exception you're eligible for, so. You know, regardless of what the real purpose of the increase in your taxes has to be.
Susan, do I understand correctly that the, uh, public safety services and those others that you've, uh, made out to us, those are not held against us for coming years?
They would be subtracted out for coming years, but they don't reduce the base for the increase. So you still have to, any exception you use this year would be subtracted out next year, and you have to use new exceptions next year. So that applies, that part of it applies to any of the exceptions, only the bond and the, uh, disaster items would actually affect how much you could increase your authority next year. So that's where, that's where it hits you, is that increase would be lowered.
I'm gonna put you on the spot. In your opinion, if we, if we can't reduce our budget enough to get us where we need to be, am I hearing that bonding is probably the better route to take as opposed to taking exceptions? Either, either way, it has an effect next year, but is there one way that is better than the other?
Right.
NACO says bonding.
They say bonding.
That's what I thought.
Because then you don't have a place area impact.
It makes sense, because then you're kind of spreading that cost out rather than.
That's what I thought, I remember from the one call.
And, and it's, it's a known, it's not unknown, it's a known entity.
It's, it's.
It's a known, you can.
And we're, we don't have to play clairvoyant act in future years, we know what the payment is gonna be, so.
Right. Right, you know exactly how much you're going to be paying out each year, so.
Because you said those payments don't change, and they're planned in from the very first decision you make.
Right. And, and typically what we do is we, you know, we start out with a really high levy for that particular bond, and then try to decrease it a little bit each year. But that's something that I kind of look at a four or five-year projection to make sure there's enough cash flow to make those payments. And that's what I usually look at, to make sure there's enough money at the end of the year to fund at least one year's worth of payments.
Yes, we, we've always, but we call it future requirements, which you see as a line item, we call it future requirements.
Yeah. So that's to, just to build that up and get that.
And the bond funds, so bonding payment funds.
So we can pretty much know, project what those amounts need to be fairly easily.
Go back, go back to the, uh, creating a cash reserve, so we're one point seven nine million over what we legally can levy, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Legally levy, so if we create a, a million dollar cash reserve line item, that's gotta come away from something else, does it not?
It could either come from inheritance, which would not affect that, because you're just transferring.
I understand that, but what I'm getting at is it really doesn't help our, the fact that we still are one point seven nine million over our taxing authority, that's my point.
Correct. Yeah. That won't, yeah, yeah, that, creating that fund.
You're taking it out of your left pocket and putting it in your right pocket.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you decide you wanna add it to your levy from the general fund, but you wouldn't wanna do that.
Yeah, that was the hard point that everybody needs to understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think we've done that the last three years.
You can call it what you want, but it's still gonna come away from something else.
And, and that is an action that we've done in the past, transferring out of inheritance into the general fund during the budgeting process to help reduce that number. We've done it the last three years.
Done a lot longer than that, but.
Well, the last three years I've done.
Yeah.
But, but Becky's al- was always cautionary, and so was Joe, that you don't wanna tap it too hard, and, and admittedly, some of us probably did wanna tap it harder than it needed, that we should've, but,
I was. Yes.
Yeah.
But I didn't have a crystal ball to see this coming either, cause we've always been fiscally responsible, and always created more taxing authority than we used, because we were fiscally responsible. And cognizant of the fact that we wanted our tax dollars, or our tax asset to be the minimal that we could instill function. But this is gonna take, to me, uh, s- a hard look at anything beyond cost of living for our, on payroll, uh, services rendered, reduction enforced, there's gonna be a lot of hard questions to answer in this one.
Yes.
To come up with one point eight million bucks. Yeah, it's like, we've always picked on the road department, it's always been low, like I said, low-hanging fruit, but they've got big-ticket items, so we, we take it away, well, we're kicking that can down the road, be, and many decades ago, when they, their best motor grader was a galleon, didn't have a, maybe a ten-year service life, and I don't wanna go back there either, but, uh, this is gonna be, there's gonna be.
Champion and galleons, those were nice machines back in the day.
It's not what Hawks told me. He was brand new in the road department. He wasn't too keen on that, and that's all you, in punch, would let him buy, cause you didn't have any money to give him. I, I, I remember that, I remember that process, many years, many decades ago, so this is gonna take some, this is gonna take, this is gonna, this is gonna be painful, I think, and trying to provide services required and meet that budget reduction, re, uh, constriction, restriction.
If I recall, last year, we s- kind of started with, um, sending out an email to all departments that submit a budget to us, and asked them to take a look, reexamine, trim anywhere and everywhere that they can, and resubmit. Am I correct in that?
We, we did, but we've gotta give them a goal.
Yeah.
You have, they, you gotta give them a target that they're shooting for.
So. Recommendations?
I, I think we need to start and figure where the sixteen percent's coming from, that's where I'm, I'm trying to figure out where the sixteen percent is coming from, because I'm telling you, when I looked at budgets, there were not those type of increases.
Okay. Okay. Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So that, I think that's where we need to start, I mean, not that we can't do the other, but I think that's where we need to start, where is the sixteen percent coming from?
I can look at that and see specifically.
That would be a big help, cause those would be where you would start looking.
So off the top of your head, do you, I mean, historically, what has that increased, I just, in the three, four years I've been here, I don't remember it being sixteen percent, even.
No, I don't either.
I don't even remember it being double digits.
No. No, Candace and I were discussing that too, and we were both like, how can that possibly be?
Yeah.
So that she just, we, her and I both felt that was extraordinarily high.
Yeah.
So until we delve into it, maybe see if we can figure out exactly where the general fund that's coming from, like I said, I, yeah, I, I know three quarters of a million is at Los Mananitas.
Yeah, I can particularly get it, see.
And that'd be something that you look at, Susan.
It increases your expenditures if we get it, they would get it, but we also have a revenue that offsets it, but it does still look like the budget's inflated because of that.
Yeah.
And Becky, that amount has to be in there, even though their grant funding is in the infancy stages, I mean, we have no idea if they're even gonna be accepted.
So. No, but typically, we budgeted for those items, cause it's easier to do that than open up the budget if they get the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, but even when we got ARPA dollars, we didn't experience something this, this large, and that's a heck of a lot more money, the ARPA dollars than Los Mananitas, so.
Yeah, I think that's.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand, that's ar- in this number.
Right.
But it offsets the revenue, but, so that's what drops the three point four to like the one point, you know, there's things in there like that.
Right.
But if we don't get it, we're not gonna spend it, so.
But it's still there in the budgeted expenditures, so that's.
But we, I think, yes. Yes. So that's what we need, I think, to look at first too, is where that increase is coming from.
Okay.
When can we s- when would you have that available for us?
Probably the next couple of days.
Can that come out to us before our meeting next week?
Yeah.
What's our, Ken, we have a certain deadline that we have to have everything done by, I wanna make sure that we're giving department heads plenty of adequate time to
September fifteenth?
Reexamine their budgets and.
Fifteenth, is it fifteenth, September fifteenth that I see? September fifteenth, I think, sort of.
I think we're probably gonna end up having to have some special meetings, Madam Chair.
I'd be okay with that, I think we did last year also, um.
September fifteenth, that gives us three meetings.
Three meetings. Didn't we, we went into the afternoon?
Yeah, we just came up on Monday.
On Monday, that works for me.
Yeah, but if we're having, we're not gonna be back to the department heads until next week with a target for them to reexamine, we're not gonna get those numbers. They're not gonna get those numbers back to Becky until later in the week, we'll get those to review on the eighth, that gives us the eighth and the fifteenth to get everything finalized.
Is there a percentage we can.
I, I don't think, it's a shot in the dark at this point, not knowing where the increase is coming from.
No, I mean, some of them, I mean, I'm telling you, I mean, some of them didn't go up more than a percent. So you can't tell them to, if you tell them to cut, you gotta put us, you know, we can't go backwards either.
Well. And last year, I think we called almost every department in and had conversation, and there were a lot of departments like that, there was nowhere to trim, that was, I mean,
You looked at lowest block or the county.
We say it over and over, and our department hence are very conservative to begin with, and so, um, but.
Yeah, they spent your passes.
If that's the case, how come we're sixteen percent over?
I know, I know. There's gotta be somewhere that we can start with, so.
But that would be very handy for us to have before the next meeting, that way we, we were ahead of the, we're a step or two ahead.
If Susan can figure out where the sixteen percent is coming from, maybe there's a, an error somewhere.
There could be.
There could be.
Well, it's not.
Um.
Just, it just seems exceptionally high.
And if, and if we can determine what that number is, and what we need to cut, can that go out to the department heads in an email from Becky? And give them a starting point before we have our meeting next week?
Yeah, but are we relying on Becky to come up with what that percentage is?
Well, she can communicate with all of us, I mean, if Susan discovers.
Yeah, but that's us making a determination outside of a meeting.
And like I said, you gotta figure out what their increase was initially, I think, you need to look at that too, not just a blanket.
I agree.
If they, if their budget went down two percent, you wanna, I mean, like I said, you've gotta realize, we gotta keep a status quo too.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna get five point whatever again, so if we get to zero or a recession,
Yeah. No.
You get, that's kinda what we did last year, you guys, we didn't look ahead, we didn't really wanna look ahead, so we cut. I mean, I realize we got to cut.
We have to cut.
I mean, I get that, but like I said, I, you, you gotta be, it's a double-edged sword, let's put it that way.
Well, and speaking as a department head, I don't necessarily need a percentage, but I would be more than happy to look over my budget, cause my budget doesn't have a lot of fluff in it.
Right.
To c- I like, I know I can't cut five percent.
Right.
I already know I can't, it's not in there, but.
And that's kinda where I was coming from in the first place.
I think most of us department heads are pretty, you know, we would gladly look over our budgets and see where else we could cut for you without a specific percentage to.
Percentage, yeah, I mean, if you, if it's, if it's not there, it's not there.
Right.
It's, uh, us giving them a percentage isn't really gonna, um.
I mean, I see the need for a percentage, I mean, that was helpful last year to have it, but I know I don't have five percent to cut.
Yeah.
I purposely knew we were going to be crunching the budget this year and coming in close, so.
Tell, tell me again, uh, what exactly is the sixteen point seven percent increase of what you, what, what?
It's the, it's a difference between what was levied last year and the preliminary, that, that, the tax request dollar.
Right, so, so whatever we levied last year, we levied a million dollars, this year, it's saying that we're mil- uh, levying a million one sixteen point seven, okay? That's, that's what it's saying, and levy is merely a number that says we need ten dollars, so you set a levy to make it, so, you know, bottom line is, uh, percentages don't mean anything to me, it's dollars, it's saying that we have to have this many more dollars than we had last year. And I, I'm, I'm not sure why it's that hard for us to understand, and I don't know the numbers, but when you take, starting at five or six million dollars behind and stuff, that, those bill big damn percentages, so percentage doesn't mean anything, we need this many dollars, and the reason we need this many dollars is we started out a hell of a lot in the hole, excuse my language, forgive percentages.
Yeah, your, your cash does, your cash balance does affect this.
Yes.
Excuse me for, but that might be easier to understand.
Okay, well, we have a starting point.
Okay.
Susan's gonna go see what she can.
And, and back to.
Dig up as far as potential errors or.
And, and back to the point about, no, yours didn't increase that much, most of ours didn't, but if you look overall, we're starting out with that lot, much less cash, okay? We all share in the blame, every department, even though, no, they didn't increase their budget that much, neither did we, okay?
Okay.
And the other thing to remember, you also have the joint public hearing calculation, then.
With what?
The joint public hearing calculation in there, so.
Yes. I'd say yes.
So.
So you'd have to cut two point, what, three million?
Two point three million.
Yeah, to, to not go to public.
Oh, I, you know, I could care less about that, that's just trying to please a bunch of people, so we don't have to go and listen to them cry.
Yeah, I, I'm not. So you're gonna volunteer to get up there and present?
Yeah, that doesn't mean anything.
If we have to do the joint public hearing, we have to do the joint public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, it's, um.
We need to take care of county business, if, if you have that.
Yeah. We, we have services that our taxpayers, uh, expect us to provide, and if we have to go sit in that room in order to do that, we will. Okay, so Susan's gonna dig in, see if she can find anything for us there, what else do we need to do?
Okay. St-
Yeah, I, I can send an email out, that like Sherry said, asking all the departments, this is how much we need to cut, like, give them a dollar amount, and.
It's. Start taking a look and offer any, any reductions that you can, I think is a good way for us to start, and if we have to,
Yeah, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
If we have to dig in, I've looked at each budget already, there were some highlights that I had with just questions more than anything. Um, and maybe we can have some individual conversations, uh, if you guys have noticed anything, and we'll be back here next, uh, Tuesday. So our meeting next week is on Tuesday morning because of the holiday.
And I don't know if we wanna take a look at any revenues, I mean, we come up with revenue amounts, if there's anything in there that, you know, we're estimating as best we can with all of us, the three of us working towards that, so if there's.
So, but, no, we're usually pretty conservative when we do the revenues, I mean, which you don't want to get crazy, cause we'll, I mean, a lot of counties got trouble with that, but.
Mm-hmm. But you don't wanna be, you know, you don't wanna unders- and, you know, like she said, you don't wanna understate it too much, if, you know, you're trying to be conservative, you don't wanna be too conservative.
Correct.
If there's a possibility that there might be more revenue, but.
And where do, where, those figures come from, Sherry's office and Julie's office, Becky's office?
We all, we all participate.
That's, yeah.
Everybody did, estimating what those are.
Sherry and Susan, yeah.
And do you feel like those numbers are fairly accurate?
I, I think, yeah, when we, when we set them, they're fairly accurate.
So really, nothing to look for there.
Okay.
Can I get a list, um, of the bonds that we have in one day sunset, like when they're paid off?
The what?
The bonds that we currently have and when they're paid off.
Yeah, all we have left is jail bonds, I think we're at five years.
Just the jail bond, and it's on that monthly report that we get.
Jail bond, we have four more years.
Four more years?
Jason, you don't have any road projects bonded, right? That's right, just the jail bond.
That's four years left?
Four years left, and that's for the expansion to the jail, right?
Yeah, for the jail, that's the jail building, like the new jail.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Suggestions? Okay, thank you, Susan, Sherry.
I wanted to find out, so, do we, how much longer before that revenue's coming in, is it paying off, or it's coming into the county?
Thank you.
General fund.
Uh, we are. Uh, we are to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. Jason, do you have anything? Captain Newton, do you have anything? Today would not be the day.
It's gotta be before you.
Very good. Uh, do we have any committee reports?
We'll have our inland port authority meeting later this afternoon. Um, did go to the District Six Highway Commission, uh, hearing. And, um, a lot of good testimony from area residents, District Six, particularly here in Lincoln County, is gonna have quite a few, uh, projects underway. They kind of gave a timeline for Newberry construction, twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty timeframe. Um, Wellfleet North is on the five year plan, uh, for the Super Two expansion, so it was good to see the Highway Commission in force here, uh, having a meeting here in Lincoln County. But other than that, I don't have anything.
I'll have more in another month or two on the commodities supplemental food program that has been, uh, has received some, uh, funding cuts. They will be working on some of the details about, uh, that in the coming, uh, months, hopefully, and maybe I'll have some information in that regard as far as how some folks could volunteer to, uh, be delivery people. My understanding is the commodities would still be available, but getting them delivered may be the issue. I'll have more on that next couple.
Commissioner, would you remind me, so you can sign up for one day a month? It doesn't have to be an everyday commitment. They have a schedule where you could do one week a month or one day a month?
Um, that, that is for within the community, the, the actual, uh, delivery of foods on a daily basis. This is on the commodities, the large boxes of commodities that get delivered every other month. It's supplied in two month increments that gets delivered from North Platte to Ogalala, Cozad, and Gothamburg.
Oh.
That's different.
Okay.
You're thinking about cutting those out, you're talking? The funding slices would affect transportation of those. Oh, okay, thank you, Sherry. My understanding is not the commodities themselves. Thank you.
So people could volunteer to transport those large deliveries from North Platte out to one of those satellite locations?
Still, still a work in progress, but, uh, we'll find out more in the next couple of months probably. Thank you.
That'll be great to have an update on that. Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, Tyler, any need for a closed session today? Thank you very much. With that, does anybody have anything else for the good of the county? Just a reminder, holiday on Monday, so our meetings are moved to, to Tuesday next week. I will do mugs in the morning, um, if maybe somebody from the inland port committee would like to go with me to talk about, uh, the airport expansion possibility?
I'll let you know later this afternoon. If I have the ability, availability, if Joe wants to do it, Joe can do it.
I think Joe, Joe took it for us last week. It wasn't really his, well, maybe it was his turn. He wasn't here for prayer, but with, with an eye patch on, so I appreciate you doing that.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna have the other one out in the morning, so.
Yeah.
Um.
I think.
We'll catch it later.
Okay, very good. I.